Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mic check, mic check. That's good. We call our meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order our first meeting of the month. We do have two meetings. Friends in the audience, we meet tonight and then we all meet the third Thursday also at 5:00 o'clock. So you're welcome to attend either one of those sessions. Of course, we are live streaming now, so those of you who will be presenting, you will be on TV for the whole world to see, at least for the whole Liberty County world to see. We welcome those persons who are watching us on Facebook as we live stream. Thank you for your participation. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. This time Pastor Richard Hayes is here for United Milster Alliance. He will come now, leading us in our invocation, immediately followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand now for the invocation and the pledge.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful and just grateful for this community that we live in, that you've blessed us to be apart. We ask that you would just continue to shower your blessings upon us and these leaders that are before us, that they would continue to lead and guide us in a direction that you would desire for us to go. We are thankful and grateful for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. And even as we stand now, we stand and we do recognize and acknowledge what's happening over in Ukraine, and we ask that you would just bless those people there in the conflict and what they're going through at this moment as we speak. We ask this in all blessings, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Let me go ahead and do this, thinking about the community. We know we've got an active basketball season, but I know that the Bradwell Lady Tigers are still in the hunt, in the chase for the state championship, so let's wish them well on a game. I think they play tomorrow up in North Georgia, so let's wish the Bradwell Lady Tigers well as they maybe to bring another trophy back to Liberty County. A shout out to them, shout out to them. And for others for having a great season too. Several of them made it to the tournament. All right, now the minutes for February 2022 would need to be approved by this commission. Have you had time to look over them?
Yes, sir, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Motion is second. We approve the minutes for the month of February. Any further discussion? If you know, all in favor, raise their right hands, please. Minutes for the month of February are approved. Proclamation, Great American Cleanup. Dr. Karen Bell is coming. She's the director of Keep Liberty Beautiful.
Good evening, everyone. Great American Cleanup is one of the largest cleanups that it happens around the country or around the nation. It's part of Keep America Beautiful. We do it here in Liberty County to make sure that our location is clean, green, and beautiful. We have our major countywide day on March the 19th, and then we have a couple of other ones. Bryceboro is April the 30th, and then as we have our Adopt Liberty Group that will have them throughout the month until June. So this Great American Cleanup continues on to June 30th.
Proclamation?
You have it, sir.
Yes, sir, this is proclamation for Great America Cleanup. The Great American Cleanup is the country's largest community involvement program that includes more than 15,000 events each spring. This national program engages more than 500,000 volunteers and participants who take action in their communities to create positive change and lasting impact. Whereas Keep America Beautiful is the nation's leading community involvement nonprofit organization that envisions a country in which every community is a clean, green, and beautiful place to live, and has established a Great American Cleanup as its signature national effort for involving American citizens in improving their community environment. Whereas Keep America Beautiful, Great American Cleanup, is the nation's largest community improvement program to create positive change and lasting impact in local communities. Whereas the County of Liberty seeks to protect its natural resources and bring people together to transform public spaces into beautiful places. Whereas the Liberty County Board of Commissioners recognizes its commitment to engage citizens, civic, and government officials and business leaders to work together to end littering, improve recycling, and beautify America's communities. Whereas Keep Liberty Beautiful and Liberty County Board of Commissioners are committed to elevate the importance of volunteerism and motivate everyone in our community to become stewards of the environment. Now therefore, I, Chairman Donald Lovett, do hereby proclaim this March 2022 Keep America Beautiful Month, Great American Cleanup, and call upon our citizens to join in activities that promote responsible environmental stewardship and help us renew our commitment to building a better world today and for future generations, so declared on this first day of March 2022.
All right, and we always have a little challenge between Hinesville, the city of Hinesville, and the Liberty County. Right now, Hinesville has the trophy, Liberty County. So Hinesville had the trophy, and we're just asking on March the 19th, let's see who can come out within the county and the city and see who gets to take that trophy home.
Bring it back to the rightful police. Misses, as they say, we know the drill. You just come. We just come and...
Come on, we had to make you look good. You make me look good. Lose your eyes.
Got it?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Make sure we get an email prior to the event, a reminder. All right, so young people are here, recognition for Liberty County 4-H project. We always happen to have young folk in our audience.
Mr. Chairman, if I can do a little lead in there. Was contacted a couple of weeks ago by a young man named Jared Harriman. Jared Harriman is a local 4-H student here and was wanting to do a project in the county and found some bridges that desperately needed some graffiti cleaned up and repainting, and asked if it was okay if he did that. And so I'll ask Jared to come at this time to tell you a little bit about his project and what he did, and we got some pictures before and after. I told him I was going to put him on the spot. He said he was ready. So tell him a little bit about yourself and what you decide to do, and we'll roll through the pictures.
Is that your family with you?
Yes, sir.
Y'all just stand up while he's presenting. Give him some support there. All right, go ahead, Jared.
I am, I was inspired by a cleanup two, about a year or two years ago, from Keep Liberty Beautiful. We did trash pickup, and it's been a while since I did a lot of community service, and I was thinking, I'm about to go to college, and I wanted to make the community cleaner better than I found it. So I decided to first start off with cleaning these two, I cleaned up two bridges in my area because my area gets commonly littered and there's a lot of graffiti there, and I... Could we roll the pictures? And those are, I decided to go with a light gray color. I, it took a while to paint, and luckily I was able to get support from my family and a fellow 4-H student, Daisy Clay.
All right.
Come on, Daisy, and stand up with him. He said, "Come on." What's that? Is that Alderwhite? Where's that? I'm trying to recognize the bridge. Where's that bridge?
That's K-Tree.
K-Tree, okay.
Did a great job. Definitely needed it.
Mr. Chairman, keep in mind, you know how to have bridges in Hinesville.
Well, when we do, they're cleaned up, they're not in the first district.
I can't believe Foxie Martin would leave something like that out there, though. I thought he'd get it over the broom, clean it up.
Good job. There's a world of difference.
What he's not telling you, it took, he took their time, too, to pressure wash and then paint and everything, and unfortunately, within about a week of him doing it, some graffiti showed back up.
Oh, no.
And so he has already gone back and redone it again.
It's not to be.
I like to keep it that way because whenever, whatever, like he said, whenever the person graffiti, it was, it contained profanity, and sadly, my seven-year-old sister had to ask me, like, what that meant, and I, I just want to keep on cleaning it up and making it as clean, just for her and many other children, because I feel like they shouldn't have to see that type of stuff, or type of graffiti on in our area.
Yes, sir. I agree wholeheartedly. Maybe we need one of those signs that says, you know, number they put down, no littering signs and X number of dollars defined, something if it's going to be repaired, because we don't want this young man working to go, to be for naught, you know? So maybe there's some sign that the county has, we can post. He's going to be going to college in a little while, and we don't want the graffiti to come back after all the hard work that he's done.
We wanted to see if we could get a picture with the board, too.
Oh, did he? Well, we can work that out, yeah. Come on around this way. Community service looks good on your, looks good on your resume for college, too, Jared. Aaron's coming.
Pop my head in the back. There you go.
Can everybody see me?
Yes, sir.
Can't see me, I can't see you. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right.
Got it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. That's called a good grassroots effort. Good job, good job. Thank you all. Thank you, our 4-H sponsors. If you would like to be dismissed, you can at this time, okay? Thank you all for coming. All right, there's been a lot of news lately about what's going on overseas, as you all very well know. There's been, Commissioners, we've received several press releases, and of course, there's been some new coverage, and I know two stations have been here to town, so as I was thinking about it this morning, I said, you know, it's one thing to get a press release, one thing to see them WSAV, but we know our brothers and sisters at Fort Stewart on a very personal level, so I placed a phone call this morning and asked to Garrison, actually, and our Garrison Commander had a previous event in Statesboro. He couldn't be here, but he sent our Deputy Garrison Commander, Mr. Steve Hood, if he will come, please now, and just give us the inside story on what's going on at Fort Stewart 100, will please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I am Steve Hood. I'm the Deputy Garrison Commander here at Fort Stewart, and just as Chairman Lovett indicated, when the phone call came in today, Colonel Ramirez, whom I'm here on behalf of, we didn't hesitate, not just because of the great relationship we already enjoy with Liberty County and in particular Chairman Lovett at many other events and venues that we're with him, but because it's an opportunity to say thank you. And we don't ever want to pass up an opportunity to say thank you to our partners and our friends and our family here at Liberty County. So I want to thank you for the support that you've always shown, but I'm going to thank you in advance for the support and the thoughts and prayers that you're already going to extend to those soldiers from First Brigade, about 3,800 strong, who have, as I'm speaking to you now, are deploying at Hunter Army Airfield to the United States Army Europe or Africa Command areas of operation. Now, some of this you've heard in news release, and there's really not much more to say than what you've heard in the news release, but I do want you to know that the great Raider Brigade, most of these soldiers are from the Raider Brigade, are going there to assure our NATO allies of our commitment to deter aggression, as you've been watching on the news, and to even train with some of our ally partners while they're there. I guess the only other thing that I want to make sure you know is that, you know that these soldiers from the First Brigade are well-trained. You should have confidence in their abilities. Many of you know they've been training. Matter of fact, we get phone calls from some of you about those noises that you hear through the night, but that's a good sign. That's a sign that they've been on the ranges and exercising and honing their skills in case called upon. The last time I spoke to Chairman Lovett, he said, "Is deployment imminent?" And with all integrity, I told him, "No." At the time, it wasn't. But I told him what is imminent is our preparation to deploy, because that's the nature of the business of the United States Army, and that's exactly what they're doing, and that's exactly what they're going to do. These particular soldiers just came back from a stint in Korea where we supported our friends and allies in Southeast Asia. So again, they're well-trained and they're ready to go. What I would ask you to do is remember that military families are resilient. They really are. They're some of the strongest I know. I come from one. I put my uniform away not too long ago myself, so my own spouse and children, they're resilient, but they can't do this alone. They are schools and classmates here in Liberty County schools. They're attending your churches, they're shopping in the grocery stores in Liberty Counties, they're getting their fuel, and they live right here. And we cherish the relationship that we have with Liberty County and the military because you're what help us strong. So I'll ask you to watch out for those spouses as they're about, out and about in the community, and let them know how much you appreciate the sacrifices that they make each and every day as family members while their spouses are deployed. I know that you're going to do well at this because as a matter of history, in 2021, just last year, this particular community was named, Coastal Georgia was named a Great American Defense Community. And Chairman Lovett knows this well, we were the only ones from military base throughout the nation that were named such, and it is largely in part to the contributions and the partnerships and the relationships we have with Liberty County. So Chairman, I appreciate, on behalf of Colonel Ramirez, I appreciate the opportunity to address the Commissioners and yourself, and to let you know that First Brigade is going to do a great job. They're fist bumping with Marn Six as they get on the plane right now and getting encouraged each and every day, and we'll continue to communicate as much as possible, and we'll ask that you do the same, and whatever we can do together to help these families who are strong and resilient and accustomed to this environment, you let us know, and we'll keep the lines of communication open. And once again, a resounding thank you to Liberty County for the relationships forged with Fort Stewart and the soldiers of the 3rd Infantry Division.
Thank you, sir. How, what percent of the deployment is complete? Can you tell us that?
Well, I can tell you that it's on schedule and it's going through. We sit in on updates. A large portion have gone through, but I won't disclose exactly how many have departed versus how many left to depart at this point, but we're well on our way and making great progress at Hunter Army Airfield, and I don't expect the deployment window to last very many more days.
Okay. Any questions y'all have for Mr. Ramirez here?
None.
All right. Thank you, sir, for canceling us in your schedule.
Yeah, thank you for asking us.
Give our best to Colonel Ramirez, and we're here for you all.
We know that. Thank you.
We're here for you all. Thank you for coming. Now, let's give a hand of applause. Take this back. Take this back, if you will. Y'all fist bump, let that be a part of the fist bump, Liberty County. Thank you, sir, again for coming. All right. Finance, Ms. Kim McGlaughlin. Kim, let me do this. I know there's a, we have two resigning petitions that is coming up on our agenda, and I know some of you are here because of that. I want to ask you all, I've given this a request to some others earlier, you know, please have your spokesperson, no more than two, ready to speak to the issue. There's no way we can have everybody speak, because most times you're going to say the same thing, so if you all would selectively, you know, choose your spokesperson, no more than two for each petition, we'll be happy to entertain them when that time comes. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to review your January financial report, and at the end of January, things are looking very nice. We have collected about 56% of our budgeted revenues, and we have exhausted about 55% of our budget expenditures. So we're right on target for where we need to be at the end of January. At the end of January, your undesignated unreserved fund balance is approximately 5.5 months' worth of operational expenditures. One year ago today, we were in the exact same place, 5.5 months' worth of operational expenditures, which is really good, because as you know, the budget increased from last year, so we're still at that same mark where we were at a year ago, so we're doing very well. A couple of departments running slightly ahead of schedule, and I'll just brief you on those, and I've mentioned them before, in risk management and the general admin fees for Coastal Georgia RDC dues, and the Superior Court Law Clerk. All of those budgets are running slightly ahead of schedule because of lump sum payments that were made at the beginning of the year. Finance is running slightly ahead of schedule as well because we had to pay for the audit that ended in December, and we paid for that as we went along, but the lump sum payment came in January. So I expect us to fall back in line February and March. Another department, Circuit Wide Public Defender, there were actually two payments made in January, one at the beginning of the month and one at the end of the month, so there was actually two payments made to the Georgia Public Defender Standards Council. That last one should have actually been made in February, so there isn't XX expenditures, just one payment made ahead of schedule. Bureau of Standards, they had several purchases that have kind of skewed their budget a little bit, things for technical services, for their body cameras, in-car cameras, and the Novatime software maintenance. So all of these large items have skewed their budget slightly. They should be at about 58%. They're a little more than 61%. I completely expect them to fall back in line. And then last of all, your debt service, and that is for the enterprise lease agreement payments that we will true up at the end of the year and identify what portion should be charged out to SLOST and what portion remains in the general fund. So we're looking good as far as the general fund revenues and expenditures. Your solid waste at the end of January, you have about 266,000 of net income right now. We went ahead and posted depreciation, so you'll see that come up in February, so I expect that to drop, that net income to drop slightly. All of your departments within solid waste are operating within their budget parameters. Same thing for all of your special revenues, your 911, child support, record center, and victim witness. Your sales tax continues to look fabulous. January, January distribution was 1,133,000. That's significant. Now, that represents December sales, but that means to date, at the end of January, we are actually 3.7, almost 3.8 million ahead of schedule in collection, so that's wonderful. Doing very well, and of course, T-SLOST continues to do well, too, and your distribution for January was all, in T-SLOST, was also over a million dollars, so looking very good.
And before you leave there, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask on these charges for services, is, these are the municipalities that we're, that we're picking up solid waste from?
No, actu, well, some of it, if the municipality pays us, but the municipalities, we don't do that anymore. Those are commercial clients.
These are all commercial clients? So we, so we, what are we looking at there?
You're talking, you're talking about in solid waste, not in the general fund, right?
Right, yeah. That's 800, nearly $800,000 there that's 795...
That we've yet to collect, but we've, we've already collected about 60, 60-something percent. So the charges for services are all of your commercial clients, your scale clients, because your solid waste assessments are now what, what's being, those are more cyclical, when the tax bills go out and then when the mobile home bills go out.
Well, the reason I was asking, so in some of the communities now that we're, we are still picking up in Flemington, correct?
Correct, but Flemington is not paying for that now. The citizens are paying for that on their tax bill.
So that increase in, I mean, you've got more people that's moved into Flemington, that's going to increase their load, not ours, except for at the convenient, I mean, at the transfer station, right?
We will bill as many people that are on the tax rolls in Flemington as of January 1.
Okay. That was all, Mr. Chairman.
When you said budget increase earlier, I said, now, if I were sitting in the audience and I heard that, my antenna might go up. Wait, wait, wait. So people explain why we had on the...
A budget increase.
Yes, so these folks are taking advantage of having them in our audience today, so we can educate.
Okay, so from '21 to '22, we're in fiscal year '22, there were some significant increases that happened. We had, we took on, I want to say, close to 17 new law enforcement employees, another 18 full-time firefighters, and most recently, we took over the EMS operations. So the EMS operations alone is over $2 million, so significant things, and there are services that are critical to a county, but there's a cost for those services and employees, you know, by the time you, the wage and then the benefits and the expense of just running the operations. And now we actually have a full-time firefighting, I mean, we have a full-time fire service, and to think about it, you know, five, six years ago, we had volunteers and some part-timers to where we are now. It's very significant, very significant, and you'll continue to see those things grow like on your next SLOST referendum, you know, when you, when you talk about what's needed, fire stations and EMS buildings and health departments and those sort of things, but once you build them, you need to man them, operate them.
Yeah. You said that, and we'll close on this, the, those of you that live in, unincorporated Liberty County, the fire station on the Island Highway, SLOST-funded, and the one on Islands, excuse me, Alderwhite Road is SLOST-funded, so that's what your SLOST dollars are doing for you as versus coming out of the general fund, as versus coming from your property taxes. Make it plain.
Yes.
Make it plain. All right. So we're glad that SLOST is doing well, so it had funded some of those capital projects that we could not do.
No, we could not do it. Yeah, property taxes would be astronomically high without SLOST.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question. Kim, on the T-SLOST, the amount that's collected for each district, is those funds available?
To those funds, yes. What happens is, so...
To the districts?
Yes, to those districts. That's correct. Now, the, all the cities actually, when the money comes here, we turn around and cut a check to all of the cities with the exception of two. Allenhurst and Gum Branch, we hold for them, but we account for them so that at any time, if they need something done, we have an account for them, and you can see what their balance is. So for instance, Allenhurst, there's already $98,000 accumulated in the T-SLOST account for Allenhurst. Gum Branch, there's...
You said that, and we'll close on this, the, those of you that live in, unincorporated Liberty County, the fire station on Island Highway, SLOST-funded.
Yep.
And the one on Islands, excuse me, Island White Road is SLOST-funded. So that's what your SLOST dollars are doing for you, as versus coming out of the general fund, as versus coming from your property taxes. Let's make it plain.
Yes.
Plain.
Yes.
So we're glad that SLOST is doing well, so it had fun some of those capital projects that we could not do.
No, we could not do it. Yeah, property taxes would be astronomically high without SLOST.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question. Kim, on the T-SLOST?
Uh-huh.
The, the amount that's collected for each district, is those funds available?
To those funds, yes. What happens is, so-
To the districts?
Yes, to those districts, that's correct. Now, the, all the cities actually, when the money comes here, we turn around and cut a check to all of the cities, with the exception of two. Allenhurst and Gum Branch, we hold for them. But we account for them, so that at any time, if they need something done, we have an account for them, and you can see what their balance is. So for instance, Allenhurst, there's already $98,000 accumulated in the T-SLOST account for Allenhurst. Gum Branch, there's $37,000 already accumulated. But those other municipalities that actually have a finance department and able to track their own expenditures and do their own financial reporting, when that money comes in, at the end of the month, the very next check run, we turn around and distribute their pro-rata share based on your intergovernmental agreement with them.
Okay.
So same thing for sales tax six. If you look at sales tax six, Allenhurst has about $189,000 available to use. Matter of fact, I think Allenhurst still has money in sales tax five, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all that I had.
One thing, enjoy this ADA requirements that we have. How, where are we at on it? Is it through?
I think there was only one piece that they had left to do, their wedding's on material four, but Mr. Long probably can tell us about that.
We're about through, Trent. ADA, where were we at on that?
Recreation ADA?
We're through?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, that will not show up no more, is it? Under the six, eight, the money allocated for that?
So that will always show up in yours, because you have road money, but you've identified 80,000 of that to go to recreation. So I have to show it obligated, or I have to take it away from the very front. But as long as it's obligated, I also put a revenue up in recreation to, to offset that. If it were a, a road department, it wouldn't be obligated anymore, but because, if it was a road project. But because it's a recreation project, the only way I could do that then, if I don't show it obligated for the rest of the program, is I would have to take it from the, which I can, if you look at the very first, under your proposed distribution, I'd have to deduct it from that, instead of showing it as obligated. Now, as road department, as road projects get finished, then I de-obligate that, because that's all road money.
Okay.
We'll keep it.
For some reason, I feel like it's $80,000 in a hole somewhere, that's what I'm wondering.
It just shows you can't spend 80,000 on your road money, because recreation spent it for you.
Went to a good cause, okay. Any other questions for Ms. McGlaughlin?
Nope.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right. LCPC, Mr. Jeff Ricketts. Man of the hour.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the board.
Good evening.
I've got two major developments for you this evening. Both of these developments have met the thresholds for the development of Regional Impact Review on the state of Georgia. They've both been submitted, it's been, that process is administered through the CRC, that's Coastal Regional Commission. They've all cleared that, so they're ready for your consideration tonight. So with that, I'll, I'll proceed with the first-
Guaranteed motion to go into public hearing for rezoning.
Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor, raise your, all right, so you may proceed. Thank you.
First request is a request by Mr. Travis Stringer. He's an, he's the applicant with the forum group. This is to rezone a combined 230 acres of land from A1 and B2 on the other side of Exit 76 on Island Highway. We want to rezone that from A1 and B2 to B2 and I1. And they want to do this to facilitate the development of a warehousing and distribution, a private warehousing and distribution park. And this property is located, as I'll get into a little bit more detail in a minute, it's located on both sides of Dorchester Village Road, which is an existing dirt road that connects the Island Highway down in some, to some community down below there. The principal use of the proposed request is a warehouse distribution, and that would be considerable, be compatible with the I-1 zone that they're asking for. The DRI development, as I said, was complete as of January 25th, so it's ready for your, your consideration. The state no longer makes recommendations, but recommends environmentally conscious designs and generally good planning practices. We do have, that DRI report is available from the CRC for your review. Appendix A, which is your zoning ordinance, says that industrial zoning requires certain development standards be met regarding smoke, odor, toxic gases, sewage and vibration. That applies to all industrial developments in Liberty County, including the ones in the Tradeport East on the other side of the street. These standards all have to be adhered to for all future industrial uses on any of these properties that will be developed. These properties are also located in the Liberty County Gateway Overlay District, so when they do have a tenant and they do, they do start to build, you'll have an opportunity to review what those buildings will be looking like before they get permitted. Here's the ad that we ran in the Coastal Courier, signs, this is a sign on Island Highway, this is a sign along Dorchester Village Road there, just showing you that we posted the property. This is a vicinity map, just showing you I-95 here, Island Highway here, 84 going back toward Hinesville here. This is the general shape of the property. Dorchester Village Road kind of curving here, back toward I-95 and going down. This is the residential rural community down on the other end of Dorchester Village Road. And of course, over here on the other side of the street is Tradeport East Development. A little bit closer in view of the same area. You can see here that there's, there's, there's several existing parcels that they're looking at combining together. These, this parcel here and this parcel here is owned by Laurel View Properties, and then this parcel right here is a part of a larger tract here that's owned by the Charlie Jones Estate Properties. And this is the zoning map that just shows how the property is currently zoned. You can see the city limits of Midway here, just past the interchange there at, at I-95. And the property in question here is outside of Midway. This, this is not, this one is not going to the city of Midway. They're leaving the Midway zoning as it is. So the property here, the property closest to I-95 is currently zoned B2. All the rest of, the remainder of the property is zoned A1. So they want to rezone all of this property, I-1, to facilitate this warehousing development. And that's just an aerial photograph showing the same area that I just showed you. You can see there, Dorchester Village Road, an existing dirt road running through the middle of the property. They're wanting to relocate that property as part of their development plan. This is a letter from the, from the Liberty County Development Authority, saying that they have adequate water. This is in their, their service area, and they have adequate water to service this development. And that's just a plat showing the, the boundary of the property. And this is the existing versus proposed zoning map. This is what we looked at earlier. You see the B2 frontage along 95, and then the A, A1 frontage back in the interior. They want to rezone the entire piece, I-1, except for the frontage here. The frontage, this IC here, which is in the city of Midway, allows for businesses. They want the other property on the other side of the road to be business, the frontage, but everything else in the rear will be industrial to accommodate the warehousing development. And this is just kind of a conceptual sketch, just showing how the, you know, how they envision these properties laying out. These buildings here combine to form about 2,000, I'm sorry, 2 million square feet of warehousing industrial space. So it's a pretty significant development. And as I said, they're proposing to relocate Dorchester Village Road, which currently kind of swings over here and comes out. They're currently proposing to relocate it a little bit further out, Island Highway, to line up here. Our zoning analysis, you're familiar with this. Does a property have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned? Our answer is yes. Does it meet the joint land use study? Yes. Does a proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? Our answer there is no. This, this area is zoned, is designated as agricultural forestry, because that's what it was zoned at the time we did the comprehensive plan. So the, the comprehensive plan generally aligns with the existing zoning, so that's why that's, that's shown up as agricultural forestry. Will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability in nearby properties? No. Is a proposed use suitable in, in view of nearby uses? In regard to the properties along Dorchester Village Road, the answer will be negative. However, the existing industrial uses across Island Highway and the Tradeport East, which we pointed out earlier. Will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, including streets and transit, and schools, utilities, and provision to public safety? Our answer is that we don't anticipate any. A portion, a portion of Dorchester Village Road will be aligned, will be realigned and paved. And I think it's important to underscore that this road will be paved, and it'll be paved to county standards, so you'd be trading about a mile of unpaved dirt road to a, a mile of high-quality paved road will be, that will be designed to accommodate the heavy truck traffic that will be on it. Would this use, would this allow a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? No. Will the change create a domino effect? Yes. Are there unique historical sites that may be adversely impacted? We haven't identified any. Number 10, is this property in a flood hazard area? No. Number 11, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? The answer is no. And number 12, are there unique conditions which support approval or denial? And we indicated there that it's close proximity to the Tradeport East industrial area, which has been identified by the county as a key industrial area, and also located adjacent to I-95, which is a very prime industrial property. So Planning Commission heard this at their last meeting in February, and they recommend approval with standard conditions. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about that.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Chair, go back to question number six.
Does only propose creating an undue burden?
Now, if you go back to your map, keep that question in mind, go back to your map where you showed the warehouse. Okay, right there, let's see if I can get this thing to work. That's, that's the proposed new road, right?
That's correct.
Okay. That road is going to be coming right in between those warehouses.
That's right.
Okay, which means that's going to be truck traffic, correct?
That's correct.
How wide is that road going to be?
It'll have to be a minimum of 60 feet, because that's what your county road standards require.
But you're talking more than normal truck traffic?
60 feet right of way, but the roadway itself will probably be 24 feet.
Okay. With a deceler lane?
I, I believe there will be a deceler-
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about on the Dorchester Village Road.
I'm not sure whether those will be incorporated into the individual entrances alone there or not. We haven't gotten to that point. This is just a conceptual plan.
Okay.
If they were needed, they would be included in it.
Okay. Now, where, where's your hole in pine?
That's, that detail's not on there.
That, that's not on it yet.
It will have to be on there, for the, for the final site plan.
Okay. Because right now, from what I'm hearing, the two main issues is traffic and the water runoff. I mean, I know this is just a rezoning, but I want to make sure it's mentioned, it's on record now. Those are two of the main concerns, is the traffic and the water runoff, right now.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Where's the current road at? Was it to the left of the, the proposed?
It currently comes out right here, and it kind of goes in here and curls around and comes back out. This, the road's ultimately going to end up back at the same place where it currently ends up, but they're just, they're pulling the road, bending it out further away from 95, because the, the current road bends in beside 95, and they're wanting to open up this lot here, because it's got visibility in frontage on 95, so they want to make room for this, this lot here, so they're going to move the road over, away from, away from I-95.
And the residents are further down?
The residents would be further down on the dirt road, and that's, that's projected to remain dirt road.
Okay, they were just going to, the proposed was just to pave that area you've got up there now?
Just what they're going to use.
Mm-hmm.
And, and there was some discussion at the Planning Commission meeting from the applicant about creating a, a turnaround area down here that would be big enough to accommodate any trucks that get down here, so that they don't go any further onto the dirt road.
Okay, okay.
So it's about a mile of dirt?
It's, it's roughly a mile of, of length.
Trent, this-
Chairman.
Where's Trent? Number, I'm coming your way. You know, just, just from there, it still costs approximately a million dollars to pave a mile of dirt road, somewhere in that area?
Close to it.
Okay, all right. Significant investment.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Jeff, could you go back to the, to the slide that had, what is that? His phone talking.
I think he's got somebody on speakerphone.
Just, just, we can't, we can't, we can't do that wrong. No, we can't do that, no. Jeff, go, go to the one, I think you had one where the city of Midway was in pink, I believe it was, one of the slides. Further up.
The city of Midway is actually the blue.
The blue?
That's the, that's the city limits of Midway, so it doesn't come any further than that.
Okay. But it was one, it, it looked, well, okay, maybe, the B2, is that Midway?
The B, the B2 is in the county. This is-
That's the county?
All, all county.
Okay, and, and the proposal, okay, where the road is right there, that's the existing Dorchester Village Road?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the B2 is closer to 95, and the A1 is to the right?
That's right.
Okay. So that, that road doesn't have any bearing on, like, one side of the road is B2 and the other side of the road, because the road is going to move?
It's running right through the middle of it. It's, it's, the road is not really paying any attention to the zoning there, it's just doing its own thing.
Okay, okay. Okay, and I guess my other question was, you said it, from, from Island Highway, they're going to pave a mile down now from, and from Island Highway to the first resident, about how far is that?
That'd be down Dorchester Village Road.
I'm not sure exactly how far it is to the first resident beyond where the pavement was stopped.
But the pavement will stop after a mile?
About a mile.
And, and the first resident is even further down?
Further down onto the dirt road.
Down the dirt road. I mean, if you, have you been down there? I mean, could you just take a guess about how much further it is from, from the highway to the, is it a mile and a half, two miles?
From, from-
To where at, Commissioner?
Just right at a mile long, from the road to the, my uncle's house.
From, from here to the first house, I guess. He's, he's saying it's well over a mile, so it's-
It's nine point 10 miles.
It's not, it's not very far past where the pavement stops.
So where the pavement stops, just beyond, just shortly beyond, that's where the first house is?
Yeah, there's no houses in this area. This is all owned by the, the applicant, or owned by the applicant. So everything that's paved will be within their confines, and then everything beyond there would be private property.
Okay. And you said that there's talk that they would have a turnaround, a paved turnaround, so that they, that they won't go beyond and get on to the existing dirt road? Okay, thank you.
All right, Chair, Mr. Chair. B2, can you give us a description of actually B2, what all can be in B2?
B2 is your general county commercial zone. That's, that's your, your highest type of commercial. You can put any kind of retail store in there, any kind of, any kind of restaurants or hotels or, any, any kind of commercial business would go in there.
Okay. But the intent is to zone all of it, uh, to B2?
No, sir, I, I-1.
Okay, industrial.
This is the way it's currently zoned. You got the B2 over here along the interstate. They want to get rid of that portion of the B2 and make that I-1, but they want to have some B2 up here on this highway here, so that, so that could be for stores or-
Commercial.
Whatever might go there, offices.
Okay.
And, and Jeff, now you said B2 is, is for what, what kind of?
Commercial.
That's commercial. That's commercial. So if, if, if all of this never happened, then there was a possibility that, because of the current zoning, that you could have put some kind of commercial in there?
Yeah, you, you might recall about, under six months to a year ago, there was, there was something in the paper that this might be a casino if they ever pass gambling in Georgia.
And that's about as-
Accommodate something like that, or, I mean, that's, that's kind of extreme, but it would accommodate any kind of jail or-
A casino is about as commercial as it can get.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. Good?
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted to ask you, Jeff, a question there on your, on your drawing. Of course, you need one or two more colors in there. I think there's plenty left on your slide, but you're actually, one person already owns one side and another person owns the other side, or has all this been acquired by one group?
There's, there's, there's two owners here. The, the Laurel View Properties owns all of this, and the CMJ, which is the Charlie Jones Estates, owns this. They, they're kind of partnering together to combine all of this into one tract of land. They'll recombine this and sell it off as industrial lots.
So, I mean, right now, all we're going to do is rezone a piece of property. And then, of course, whatever comes after this can be turned down.
That's right. That, well, they'll have to bring back to you a, a subdivision plan that shows the road.
I understand that.
Right, okay.
So I just wanna make sure that, um, I mean, what's out there now is agriculture or pine trees or whatever. I'm pretty familiar where, where the road's at, and, um, I understand, you know, the growth right there at that interchange, but I just wanna make sure everybody in here understands that it's just a rezoning. It could be rezoned, and they could come in and say they wanna put whatever, and that, that could be turned down, and have to come before this board or another board. But the, the front part up there that you've got on Islands Highway.
Yes.
This, this part right here, you'll have a decel lane, the chairman asked that, a decel lane coming in to Dorchester Road, and then you'll have it to where, is there gonna be a cut? There's not a, no way that they can't get across and go back to the left there then. I'm talking about the traffic that comes out of Dorchester Road can, will go up there, and then they'll turn, they'll turn left to go back to the interstate.
Right, right.
Okay, and we have no plans of doing anything with the other part of the road that comes around. I guess that's Brigden Road. We're, that's not gonna, that's further back east of you there.
Yeah, this Dorchester Village Road will become dirt here, and it goes all the way back toward Brigden Road, but there's no, there's no future plans for that.
That's all I had.
All right, let's do this. Petitioner here.
Yes, sir.
Come and give us your overview, and then while he's standing, hold on, sir, if you will, uh, the, do we have at least two spokespersons for, for this rezoning? So if you'll prepare after he's done, come forward, okay? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Uh, my name is Chad Zitrow with Kerning Company. Uh, I'm here representing the applicant Laurel View Properties, as well as CMJ Properties. Um, also with me tonight is, is Travis Stringer, uh, with the, the forum group and Ms. Cochran, which have, uh, you know, represented this property for an excess of, of 20 years. Um, going through the presentation, uh, we are aware of the, you know, zoning standards in regards to the smoke, toxic gas, things of that nature as related to manufacturing. Uh, we are, uh, you know, this is a warehouse distribution project, so we have no concerns or issues with, with meeting those requirements. Um, in addition, it was mentioned the Gateway Overlay District, and a lot of that identifies a commercial along Islands Highway. As you can tell from our application, you know, we've left the Islands Highway portion frontage as a, as a B2 zoning with the industrial more south of that area, in order to keep the, the, the frontage commercial look along Islands Highway, which is, in, in our opinion, what the intent of the Gateway Overlay District is, so feel like we've complied there. Um, the Dorchester Village Road relocation, uh, as was mentioned, it is our intent to shift that existing connection point intersection about 150 feet to the east. What that does is gets us further away from the I-95 interchange, and in the event there is ever, you know, significant growth or potential to install a signal, the, the new roadway location would then meet the spacing requirements between, you know, that are required by DOT between those, the, the two intersections. So, in addition, it will align with the, the roadway to the north, um, you know, in that northeast quadrant, which Mr. Stringer represents and owns as well, which, you know, is kinda in the planning process for some, some future growth there. So, that's kinda the intent to, to shift the roadway, uh, for the intersection, uh, location. Um, you know, also, it was mentioned that we made a commitment at the Planning and Zoning Meeting for this truck turnaround to be at the southern portion of where our roadway improvements are. Uh, we would install signings such as no trucks any further, which is what you see in a lot of areas, but we also feel it's very important to provide these drivers with a mechanism so that they have a location to turn around. And so, not only would you be going out of roadway, no trucks further, no trucks ahead, there will be a truck turnaround application there, so that they can, can make the circle and come back out, and not interfere with the, the residences further down, which we acknowledge was a, a concern that was brought up at the Planning Board meeting, that we feel like we've addressed. Um, uh, you will also note on the site plan, uh, you know, that was presented earlier, the southernmost building we have, uh, we're aware of the noise requirements and things of that nature, but, but what we've shown is to show the rear of that board, building up against the residences, and what that would incorporate would be, the truck courts be on the opposite side of the building where the majority of the noise and everything is, and just the rear of the building to be located closer to the residence. So, we've taken into consideration on our site planning aspect, how do we orient buildings and do things of that nature in order to, to protect adjacent properties, um, you know, as much as we can from, from noise pollution and things of that nature. Um, the, we did have a, a recommendation for approval from the, the zoning board. Um, we are aware of the, the standards, conditions that were mentioned in the, in the zoning report, and, and comply with those. Uh, some questions were brought up earlier in regards to the roadway improvements and what that would consist of. Um, our pavement section and roadway section would actually be a 36-foot-wide roadway from the intersection of Islands Highway until the terminus point at Dorchester Village Road. What that 36-foot-wide roadway allows is a travel lane on each side, as well as a center-left turn lane. So if somebody is turning to go into one of these developments or one of these access points, there's a center lane to not block through traffic. So our roadway would be 36-foot wide, uh, the road, the right-of-way would be more than likely 80 to 100 feet, hasn't fully been determined, but it will be, uh, wider than your standard 60-foot, 24-foot pavement, for 24-foot pavement. We do intend to make this road both thickness-wise and width-wise wider than what your standard roadways are. Um, also, uh, the stormwater pond that had been, uh, previously mentioned, uh, on this site plan, which was presented when we filed, you see a nine-acre trailer yard, kind of adjacent to Dorchester Village Road. Uh, we have gone to find, gone ahead and acknowledged that, and that's gonna be replaced with the stormwater detention pond of approximately nine acres in that location. So that is a concern that we've heard. Uh, it's also a standard condition that we comply with all stormwater regulations, and so, uh, uh, we've heard that and, and feel like we've addressed it. Um, in addition to that, we'd be glad to answer any, any questions, concerns, or anything we didn't hit on that you may have, uh, regarding this app, this zoning application.
Okay. You said a nine, approximately a nine-acre detention pond?
Yes, sir, correct.
That's, that's pretty.
Significant.
Okay, and the road is, the, the pavement's gonna be 36 inches wide? I mean, 36, 36 feet wide?
Yes, sir, it's not a bicycle lane.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions for the engineer while it's here, then we're gonna... All right, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now let's hear from some of the residents. Who, who's representing the, who's the spokesperson of persons?
We can have two, so we can do two.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us.
We appreciate it. My name is Ashley Mosher, and somehow I was elected to speak for the residents on Dorchester Village Road, probably because I have the biggest mouth. So, um, we would like to point out on this, this map, could someone point out the beginning of your property? Mr.? You go back to the other slide. Can you show us where your property is? To show you how close that road would potentially come to property, maybe not houses, but where property begins.
Right.
So, um.
Yeah.
I suppose our first question is, what do we need this for on this side? Um, you know, we have Trade Port East, and it's not all been utilized. There's still a wealth of property and space over there that can be utilized for more buildings, more, um, warehousing, and I, I understand that, you know, we get bigger port in Savannah, they're gonna need more space and that kinda stuff, but Trade Port East is not nearly utilized. Um, there's still space out there, and it's advertised so on the internet that, you know, there are more parcels and things that are, that are available there. So I suppose the question first the residents have is, why do we need it there? So, we're all about the improvements in the truck lane and that kinda stuff, but I would also like to point out that if you go on Trade Port East towards Sunbury, there are signs that say no trucks further, but there's no mechanisms to keep them from going any farther or not turning around or anything else like that. And I don't know if it was overlooked. I'm a new resident of Liberty County, but we are glad to be here. And, you know, we kinda moved to this area when we retired, and we decided to stay, because my husband's retired military, and we stayed because we love the way the area looks. And I don't think we're taking into consideration not just how it affects us, but it affects all of Islands Highway. You're gonna have people that come all the way from Sunbury into work, into Midway, into Hinesville, all of that commuting, and you're gonna have nothing but trucks. And if you come at like 4:05 down Islands Highway, you will have everybody leaving Target Distribution, you'll have everybody that's going to work, so, and it's just a few minutes worth of, of more traffic. So it's not a huge headache, but add another 2 million square feet, 2 million square feet of warehouse over there. That's hard surface, water runoff, that's more people, more cars, more giant parking lots, that you're adding to this area without any other improvements other than moving Dorchester Village Road to meet the Georgia Department of, of Highway, so they can't have two potentially lights too close together. No other improvements, and you have all this congestion, but it's gonna affect everybody that lives down there, not just us that back up to the Dorchester Village Road. It will affect us mostly. And somewhat from the new buildings with hooker furniture and those buildings, it has already affected us with runoff and everything. We have more flooding that has occurred last spring, when we had all those rains and everything that was not seen potentially before. So, there's standing water in the ditches now, um, on both sides of Island Highway, also on Dorchester Village Road. There's some slow spots on Brigden Road. Um, in my little car, I don't even turn down the dirt road to get to my house at the beginning. I go all the way down to Brigden Road and come that way, because it's much safer for me in my smaller car. So you're gonna have all of this traffic, and all of these families that are gonna traverse, I mean, it's a potential for disaster.
Chaos.
And chaos. It, I, it really is, because, and, and the problem that I think some of the residents and, and that we're having is that, one, it's gonna be right in our front yards. It's going to obstruct our view, it's gonna obstruct, but you're also infringing on a lot of what Liberty County has deemed, this is historical. In your five-year progressive plan and all of those things, time and time again, I have read, or Liberty County, to, um, you know, to protect the roadways, to protect, uh, nature, to maximize the use of existing infrastructure and encourage growth that is supportive of existing development. And if you add something new and rezone it, you're not staying true to what you've put forth in your five-year plan. And by the way, that's a 266-page document that I digested, so I know all about this area now. So, so you've also said that will promote sustainable and efficient commercial development that reuses existing buildings. So I'm only talking about Trade Port East. I'm not even talking about the Midway industrial, what's used there, what's not been used, what's not been facilitated. So I feel like these companies that could be looking at potential to come in that would be rezoned there, we're not, we're not asking them to use what we already have, or come and look at what we already have that's available. I mean, I know everybody likes shiny and new, but sometimes, you know, you need a little dirt rubbed on it, and it makes it good, 'cause it's been tried and tested. But potentially here, I, I, we're not seeing the need for it in this area, and Fordham or whoever, it looks good on a piece of paper for some spec, something or somebody's portfolio, but we live there. They don't live there. We travel that road every day. We go back and forth to the IGA down there in Midway to get our groceries and our milk and everything, and it would be in amongst all of those trucks. And I will have to say, since they've been there, and we've moved there, and we've been there over a year now, that I was worried about the trucks turning in at Target and everything, and that kinda stuff, that's not been a huge problem. But let's add 2 million more square feet of that. At any time of day, coming off of 95, no real upgrades or anything on this side of the highway, no potential for that, and I think that we're asking for chaos. So Commissioner Walden, when you were asking, you know, it's, I, I'm a, I'm a preschool teacher by trade or whatever, that's where my heart is, so, um, the book that it relates most to me is if you give a mouse a cookie, and if you give a mouse a cookie, he'll wanna come inside. And then if you give a mouse a cookie, then he'll wanna nap in it, and, and a glass of milk, and then he'll wanna get comfortable on the couch, as so the book goes. So I'm saying, if we give a mouse a cookie, how much more down Islands Highway are we gonna allow them to take from our historical Dorchester area? We all know the value of those areas, and how beautiful they are, 'cause down at Sunbury, there's some of the most beautiful views, and we lived in Bryan County for a while, so I can tell ya, I'll choose Sunbury any over Bryan County view. So, that's my stand, and I think I represent everyone else pretty well, that they feel the same way, 'cause we've gotten together and talked about it at length, and with the Commissioner too, about how we feel, and these are problems I don't think that have been addressed in a timely manner to give us time to respond to them either. So, but it's something to take into effect. So as I got in the car today, and was headed home from work, I listened, listened to the oldies and decompressed from school, and so you know what song came on? It's called Big Yellow Taxi. That's not really the, the phrase of it or whatever, but it goes, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." And then they asked the farmers, and they took all the trees and put them in a museum, and they paid people a dollar and a half to go see the trees. Is that what we're doing? We're gonna pave our paradise down on this historical end of Liberty County and put up a parking lot with an ugly metal building to look at. And they did, they said, "We'll keep part of that commercial." So what is that gonna be? Some sort of fried chicken place so that the truck drivers can grab their taco and fried chicken to go as they pull out in front of moms and minivans on their way to the next wherever they're going? 'Cause that's what it feels like. That's exactly what it feels like to us. So thank you for your time. We hope you take this into consideration. So, is there anyone else that would like to?
No.
Have I missed anything?
Good.
So, you know, they've, they've put up plans, and they look good on paper, but what you, what you commissioners put forth in paper sounds a lot better to us than this. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I have a question.
For her? Ms. Mosta?
Ms. Mo, question.
Yes.
I've heard your concerns.
Yes, sir.
If some of your concerns were addressed, although this is just a rezoning, would you probably feel a whole lot different about it?
Um, I think, as the residents, if we were given time and we were given some assurances that our issues would be heard and what could be done to solve it, I think, I think they would be agreeable to, to that. This was done in an awful quick time. We had very little time to get together, to figure it out. The signs were placed, and they were placed in a timely fashion, but the print's like this big. I don't know about y'all, but I'm still getting used to my bifocals, so.
And you're about the one that got my foot.
Yes, and there was a large sign, and it somehow disappeared and got knocked over before a picture could be taken of it, so that we could, you know, go down through the community and everything. So this really has been a grassroots campaign by several of us to get together, to, to knock on doors and say, "Hey, did anybody else see this sign?" 'Cause I think it's really important, because I think in the zoning or the allowances or something like that, you only have to notify people whose property that butt up to it. So the rest of us on Dorchester Village Road didn't have any idea until we stopped and took, I took a picture of the sign.
Yeah, those are regulations.
Right.
Within 200 feet, you get properly notified, otherwise you're just a concerned citizen.
Right, so I.
So none of.
We were given time to address those situations, and we would know.
Yeah.
But I think ultimately in the end, I think it, there could be a better use of this property than commercial districts, you know, than, than turning this into more warehousing and you haven't used already what you have.
Okay.
And what's been, what's been put here.
Why are you standing, something we normally do for, for every rezoning, not just this one? How many of you all live within the 200-foot radius of this project?
Back and forth.
You would've been notified. You would've been notified. Okay. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you. Um, let me say this to you. Okay, thank you. Um, I do know that I'm on the Liberty County Development Authority. We don't have many more large blocks of land in, in Trade Port East. We really, and, and you're right, um, the people, we're being told from our friends at the Georgia Ports to get ready, get ready, get ready, because that movement is coming this way. And, and then, but in Liberty County, we have part of our, uh, obstacles is the wetlands that we have here. Whether work around that. So maybe open land, but probably not buildable because it's, you know, has wetlands in it. So really in Trade Port East, there's not a lot of vacant land left to do warehousing. Now, we have Trade Port West, which is a little further across from the Captain Joe's, that's about. But folk wanna be closer to, you know, 95, the whole logistics, logistic kind of thing.
We understand the logistics and, and we're not knocking any of that.
I got you. And I appreciate your presentation. You've been, you've been very cordial. I'm glad we had this moment together. Um, Mr. Brown can probably tell you, and Jeff Rickerson can too. There are tentative plans for road improvements, um, in that area. Uh, this just came a little power to us being able to do that. But there are some plan, we have it at, the study, the studies will start.
Already started.
Already started, yeah.
Already that was district engineer.
On making improvements just because of the reason that you, that you stated. So that, that's in the works. That's in the work. Without your being here, that's in the works. Because we knew that the folks in that area would have those concerns. And we want our citizens to be safe too.
Exactly. Because we, you know, you come down to visit and feel like we want.
So we're using some of our T-Spots funds. You know, thank y'all for, I hope you voted for T-Spots. For T-Spots funds, we'd help make the road improvements so everybody can be safe coming in and around that whole, that whole area. Yeah. I can tell you that's on the way.
Mr. Chairman, she, she opened up the door there about the mouse and the, you've let the mouse.
I like that.
You let the mouse in, yes, sir.
I appreciate you coming. I'm, I'm, I know a lot of the people that live in that area. We've seen, um, Island Highway from Midway all the way to the coast. I can remember when there was maybe one business there at the end of the Dorchester Road. I mean, just one, that was it. You would pass maybe three cars from one end to the other. People invested their money, their life savings, and they bought this property. And, um, like you said, it's been sitting there 20 years. There was 20 years there where now it's, it's time, you know, corn's ready to pick. So you can't really say that these folks are wrong. We wanna try to make every effort to do what's best for the citizens. But if you go down there and buy 10 acres and somebody comes in and says, "I wanna buy your 10 acres," and they put two houses where your one house is at, that's just part of the, the, the way the world goes around. Um, I never ever thought I'd see anything on that curve. I did not support and still don't support a casino there. But that gives us the leverage when we rezone, when the, when the building permits come up. You know, we have that opportunity to turn them down. It's, it's not always an easy thing to sit here and listen to the residents, um, Ms. Devendorf and all the people that's got property on one end of the, of that coastal highway there. You know, it's, everything changed, it seemed like it was overnight. But I do appreciate you coming. I've talked with people there that's in that community on the Dorchester Road and, and they'll tell you, they, they feel like that it's gonna come. They're not fighting it, they're not against, they just want to have some say-so with what's in there. Now, everybody that's in that area should have gotten letters, correct, Jeff?
It's according to where you live.
On, on the islands, on the Dorchester Road.
Within 200 feet. Yeah, not everybody.
Yep. Preserving.
200 feet.
That's our, that's.
So that's, everybody's on the Dorchester Road 200 feet from there.
From this red line, from this property right here, this being, this before you tonight.
But I just didn't see Norman Harris in there, and I thought Norman was within.
Norman is not close to it.
No, he's not close to it.
Okay.
We do send the letters as you require, as your ordinance requires, but we also posted two signs on the property.
And they saw them.
In the newspaper.
She said she saw.
We had, uh, we had a planning commission meeting two weeks ago on the 15th, and we had a pretty good crowd.
So, so the word got out. Let me, let me do this before I forget and get in trouble. You can have a seat, don't, just don't go too far. Commissioner, uh, Frazier had questions. He's on, I had him on hold for the last 12 minutes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sheriff, thank you so much. Uh, I just have a few questions. The first question is for, uh, Mr. Rickerson. Hello?
He's ready.
He's coming.
I'm here.
Right. Uh, the, uh, the first question that I have, uh, uh, looking at the zoning analysis, at number three, where, where it asks the question about, does this, uh, proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? The question that I have about a comprehensive plan, whenever we put that comprehensive plan in, in place, was the highest and best use of, of the vacant land, was that even acknowledged during that time?
No, generally, and, and generally, we go with the, the current zoning on the property. I mean, if, if there, if there are areas that are just obviously going to, uh, develop over the, over the, the planning period, then we would, we would go ahead and speculatively change those. But this, this entire area was zoned agricultural forestry, except for the area closest to the interstate, which is already zoned B2, and the, the comp plan calls for that to be commercial.
Right. So, uh, in, in your opinion, B2 would be the highest, the best use for anything around the 95 corridor, correct? Is that what, what you're saying?
No, B2 is not a bad use for that area because it is a, uh, an area with a lot of traffic. Uh, the interstate has at least, uh, 30,000 cars on it, and, uh, Highway 84 and Island Highway have a good number of cars on them in that area as well.
Absolutely. So, so in other words, uh, I, I guess, uh, in my opinion, I, I, I look at the highest and best use. Uh, and just like the citizen, uh, I, I didn't catch her last name, but Ms. Amy, what she was saying. Uh, if we're already having issues with traffic, you know, it, it's, it's kinda hard for, for me to, to think that, you know, building, building a, uh, a warehouse with, with, with 18-wheelers coming in and out, that, that would be the highest and best use for, for that particular piece of property. Uh, I, I, I know we, we've always worked hard on our comprehensive plan, and, and to, to me, that's what we need to follow. Uh, because if, if we're not gonna sit and follow our comprehensive plan, then what's the, what's the use of having that? Hello?
I'm, I'm here. Was that, was that a question, Mr. Frazier?
Well, I, I, actually, I, I think that was probably more of a statement.
It was.
In my opinion.
It was.
That as well. Uh, and, and also, uh, with, with this particular warehouse. And another issue that I have, I, I feel like if, if all the land isn't in Liberty County, so some of it has to be approved by the City of Midway also, correct?
Not in this particular proposal. Everything in this proposal is outside the city limits of Midway.
Okay. But, but some of it is. So would you have to, uh, do the same presentation in, in the near future with the City of Midway as well?
There, there is one area where the, the, the City of Midway is included in this, and that's the, the road closure, the relocation of the road. They, their city council, I've talked with the county attorney, Kelly Davis, and he's indicated that both the Board of Commissioners and Midway would need to act to, in order for this proposed road relocation to happen. Because it does go through the, cuts through the corner of the City of Midway.
Okay. So, so e- even with that, if, if we're talking about, uh, dealing with the redirection of a road or anything, you know, also with that, I feel like we, we putting the, putting the carriage before the horse as well. So I, a- a- again, my sentiment is, me personally, I don't believe like this particular project, this particular rezoning is the highest and best use of this particular proj, uh, this corridor with, with, uh, with 95. And, uh, and just like the citizen said, I, I think we have other options for, for warehouses other than on our corridors, especially right there.
Another statement, sir?
I think I'm done.
Mr. Chairman. Let me say this. I don't have anything against growth, development for Liberty County. But it's one thing that LCPC, Mr. Long, this Board of Commissioners, one thing that we need to do, we need to slow down and look at our infrastructure. Because once we build, the infrastructure is not gonna catch up with the bill on top of the ground. So that's one of the issues that we are running into in Liberty County now. Because you're building 200 and something houses here, warehouse here, and the infrastructure is not moving, nor the protection for the citizens of Liberty County is slowly moving. So all of these things is outrunning what we are, what our intent are. But we need to be aware of that and put more emphasis on the infrastructure and what we're trying to do then, put more emphasis on what's above the ground.
I, I think we're doing that as much as time and, time and finances will allow. You know, we're, yeah. Uh, this is a rezoning. Or, let me remind you, this is a rezoning. According to the rezoning, then this will come back to us, you know, for our final stamp of approval. But right now, it's just to, to have the property rezoned. All right. You should, you wanna, uh, something that we didn't cover from your spokesperson?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
You are familiar face behind that mask. Yeah, you've been there before.
Been here before.
No?
It's a real honor to be before you.
Thank you.
I love it. Other commission members. Uh, my name is Scott Belford. I'm Meredith, uh, Devendorf Belford.
Okay.
Um, we represent, uh, the property where the non-point source runoff from the nine acres will, um, need to run to. And so I would just ask if the, uh, commission has any real metrics to correlate the displaced water from the millions of acres of warehouse space as well as the new road surface? What are the metrics behind the gallons of rainwater displaced? And how certain are we that the nine-acre retention pond will hold this? And if, like the most recent developments with the furniture warehouse, if those patterns hold true, when your retention ponds overflow, that water races downhill through our property, backing up all the residents at Trade Hill. We have expended in excess of six figures to do the work of the county after requesting the services of the county engineer to alleviate the flooding, not only off of Trade Hill Road, but also along Dorchester Village Road. We are suffering, in spite of the statements in the LCPC appraisal, real property damages that we are quantifying from the runoff that is not being managed from the industrial warehouses. There is no confidence currently in the metrics behind the engineering decisions being made. And I would urge this capable council to better inform itself of the metrics behind the decisions you are being asked to make. How many gallons of rainwater in a hurricane are displaced by, was it 1 million or 2 million, um, square foot of roof in addition to parking? Do we have an accurate number of the number of vehicles that will ingress and egress from a single-lane road? And are the taxpayers who are eagerly joining the Liberty County tax base aware that they are going to have catastrophic traffic situations when a truck driver who is not paid to care about the residents of Liberty County needs to make that left-hand turn? We all know what that's like. We've been behind that trucker. And we're going to invite, I would like the commission to know, approximately how many? 100 per day? 200 per day? 300 per day? Do we have any anticipated impact? Not only of the flow of the vehicles, but the gallons of water displaced? I do not believe that the nine-acre pond is adequate. We have withstood and are paying the damages for the county's mismanagement of your current industrial parks. We will not take that runoff water. We do not have to take that runoff water. We politely took it before for our neighbors at Trade Hill Road. But we will not take the runoff water for an industrial zone. At this time, when national security is paramount and the self-reliance of an historically vibrant agricultural community is about to be undercut when you take prime agricultural land, maybe we should incentivize agricultural-based economies. Maybe we should incentivize an agricultural-based business. This is as necessary for import and export as a warehouse with furniture. Let us look at the metrics. Let's look at the gallons displaced, and let's look at the jobs per square foot. These are really easy metrics that each of you, if you utilize these metrics, can leave a legacy for 100 or 200 years that you didn't just take the latest thing that the governor or the ports have said we need. You've said, "What brings the most jobs and the most sustainable living income to grow our tax base and to sustain the family values we need to have the community that we all want to be in?" It is not, to my opinion, unless the metrics wear it, uh, bear it out, a water-displacing warehouse with the prostitution, the crime, and the indiscriminate behavior that comes from truck drivers who are not paid to care for our community. So I would just thank you for your time. In my days in public service on the state of Oahu, working with the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in the city of Honolulu, in the state of Hawaii, traffic was always paramount to any future development, as was non-point source runoff. So thank you for your time. I do hope that we gather these metrics so that we can make actionable and informed decisions. At this point, this seems to be a very hurried, mismanaged, and poorly precedent-ed plan that I believe we can do much better than. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rickerson, these people, I keep hearing hurried. Has this rezoning gone through the normal process that any project would?
It actually is, has had, has had a bit of a delay in it because it had to go through that development of regional impact, uh, process that the state requires. So it had an extra 30 days built into it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Engineer, I'm trying to close this out. You, you have some?
Could I have an opportunity just to vote a few there?
Two minutes worth, sir.
Yes, a few quick points. Uh, I would just like to note that, you know, in Liberty County, where our location is and the truck traffic that we generate, uh, we're basically able to make about three turns a day at the Georgia Ports in regards to getting containers, getting them back. Locations such as Garden City and Port Wentworth, which are right there adjacent to the ports, can make eight to nine turns a day. So we're basically at a third of the truck traffic going back and forth to the ports at this location just because of our distance. So the, uh, the end-users that we build, that, that come here to occupy these particular buildings do not generate the same amount of traffic because they can't make, physically make the same amount of turns going back and forth to the port. So there, there is a little bit of, uh, you know, a reduction there as far as traffic goes. Uh, second, um, warehouse vacancy rates. You mentioned Liberty County, uh, Industrial Development Authority is basically out of land. The warehouse vacancy rates in surrounding, you know, Savannah areas servicing the Georgia Ports is at less than 1%. Uh, we can't build them fast enough. The ports is growing so much. We're trying to bring, uh, you know, more opportunity and, and more, you know, workers, more services, more goods, uh, you know, to the area. And so that, that's part of our plan. Um, in addition, when we start thinking about traffic impacts, and in all of Liberty County, you know, where could a warehouse go? Look, where could a warehouse be? Where could industrial zoning be to have less impact on the roadways than anywhere else? Our location coming to Dorchester Village Road is approximately 1,100 feet from I-95, and then approximately, you know, not quite a mile down Dorchester Village Road. So essentially, you know, we impact less traffic that's not on Highway N- I-95 than basically anywhere else in Liberty County, uh, that you can look at. Um, and so looking at the, the county as a whole and where this particular application is proposed, we feel like it is a good use and it is the right location. Uh, one last thing. Liberty County ordinances require a 50-foot buffer between residential and industrial zonings. Um, we will note, and we will consider it a condition, uh, to double that buffer requirement between industrial and residential to 100 feet. So if anyone would. So if anyone would like to make a, you know, make that a condition or anything, we will accept that to double the buffer between the commercial, excuse me, between the industrial and residential from 50 to 100, which doubles what Liberty County's current ordinances are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I think we've heard plenty. Once again, this is the rezoning, as Commissioner Walton explained so very well earlier. And we've heard from both sides who've been very, let me say this, clear, and we heard from Ms. Alicia, Ms. Mose, who's been very passionate, and many of the residents, we're familiar, we know you, so we understand. Commissioner Walton said, our job gets to be tough in that we have to, we have to hear the petitioner, and it's his property, and you've very well explained, you are retired here, and we're happy that you made Liberty County your home, and some of you have been here for many, many, many years, so we have that in mind, too. But this is one of those things, Commissioner, that comes to us from time to time, that we have to address, but once again tonight is just the rezoning. And I say that because if the rezoning passes, then these gentlemen will have to come back with the plan that this commission will have to, will have to approve. So tonight is not approving their plan, it's just approving the rezoning part, if that should happen from this commission. All right. All right, you done, sir?
Sir, we have a recommendation of approval from the planning-
All right, chair entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is Commissioner Stevens' district, and I hope he'll forgive me, but we all know that anything 1,100 feet from the interstate is going to grow, whoever is going to wind up having it behind this board or after this board or before this board. Somebody, and I see Mayor Ratcliffe back there, he sat on the development authority, and he knew that the time was coming in that end of the county. So I know this is a recommendation for a rezoning, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve the rezoning as it stands. I understand what you talked about and your design and all your things you had, but all I'm up here to do is, is to, is for the rezoning. Now, whatever you come with, you know, else, you'll have to come back to this board again.
Is that seconded a motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
That's a motion and a second. Mr. Brown, the petitioners offer for the 100-foot buffer, is that something we entertain now, is that when he comes back?
If you want that binding, you can, he's offered it, you can make that part, a condition of your, a special condition. All we've got is standard conditions, but if you want to make that a special condition...
All right, let me make sure you're all clear. He's offering, our county requires a 50-foot buffer, he's offering to do 100 foot between their venue and where you all are.
Across the street.
No, not across the street. Yeah, same side. So whoever's, whoever's in the, I guess you go to the map.
Talk about from the corner of the buildings.
Yeah.
100-foot buffer, correct. What you're talking about.
So Jeff, show them, maybe have the engineer come.
Yeah, this is the edge of the property. So all these buildings would be at least 100 feet from-
From whoever, yeah.
...to the property.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, too, you need, more importantly, to note it in here, but also note it whatever plan comes back to you, which is where the binding effect happens.
I'll amend that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
With the 100-foot buffer.
Rezoned with 100-foot buffer, okay. All right. I'm sorry, we're in the, we're in the, yeah, yeah. All right, everybody clear? All right, all in favor of that motion, let me know by raising your right hands, please. All right, all the polls. Commissioner Frazier?
No, no.
Got it, sir, thank you.
So what was that?
So it's four to three, correct, it passes.
Four to three passes, all right, okay, all right. Thank you. Is everybody clear? We need to have your phone number. We need to have your phone number.
Okay, we got your number, too, so we're going to go over the metrics.
Okay, all right. Thank you for, thanks, and I'm trying to move the bean alone. Our resource, sir, see that gentleman sitting to your, to your left?
Be me aware of this gentleman.
All right. We lean and yield on his expertise when it comes to those things that you mentioned, and that's what we have, because none of us here are engineers.
I'm sorry?
None of us.
I'm asking all the metrics.
I hear you.
Do you have metrics?
I hear, I hear. That gentleman walks us through that process.
Does he have metrics?
Yes, he does.
And would the chairman be willing to provide those metrics to the public under the sunshine law so that we can be aware of it?
Well, I'm sure that gentleman that's sitting to your left would be able to provide those to you.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, we don't have metrics on this event because the developer is not required to do it at this time. He's getting a zoning and he'll do it.
He's talking in general, I think.
In the general, the metrics are published by the state of Georgia, and ordinance for runoff calculations, and run on engineering models, so.
But we're not making any more decisions right now.
We, what we did was rezonate these properties to a commercial.
Rezoning, yeah. We ready, Mr. Chairman? All right, we ready?
Let's go to the next one.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the second major zoning action that's requested at the exit 76 interchange, just directly across I-95 from the one you just heard. This is a request by, for a rezoning and a conditional use, and this one definitely does require Midway Mayor and Council to act on it before it can be fully approved. But we're asking, because the property sits on the stride, the property sits astride the Midway and Liberty County boundary, so it's got to be approved by both boards. This is a request by Dow Block, which is the applicant, to rezone 6.69 acres of land from AR-1 to B-2. Property owner is Mr. Lillaway. Property is located on East Ogletorpe Highway, and you see the parcel number there. The Liberty County portion of the property is in the rear of the property, the part that's on the front of the road is next to what used to be Holton's Restaurant, and that property is, that's where the actual truck stop that they're proposing to build is going to be located within the city of Midway. But this property in the rear that you're being asked to consider is the, is the portion of the property that will contain the truck parking area. So, as I said earlier, this, this project, because it's a, because of the size of it, has been through the state DRI process as well, and it will return complete on January the 27th of this year. In conjunction with the rezoning, it's not, it's necessary to rezone this property to B-2, but in addition to that, your ordinance requires that a truck terminal has to have a conditional use permit as well, so we're going to ask you to vote on two matters here tonight. This is the sign on the property, and I know it's been well seen because we've gotten a lot of calls on that one, and the, this is the ad that was in the Coastal Courier. This is the, the red area outlines the property. You can see here in dark black here is the city limits of the city of Midway, so you can see the red property there kind of spills over into the unincorporated county. This is the, this is the area that we're asking you to act on tonight. I'll be taking this to the city of Midway in a couple of weeks and asking them to vote on the Midway portion of it.
Well, Jeff, let me ask you a question right here. What, what are you, if, if, if it's rezoned for the truck parking and you can't access it from the front road, what's going to wind up happening to the, to the property?
If-
I mean, if the city of Midway says no, we're not going to do that, because they'll have to be the one that decide the D cell lane that goes into this, right?
Correct. Well, GDOT will have to approve the entrance. If GDOT doesn't approve the entrance, then this project's dead in the water anyway.
Well, that's what I'm saying, what are we, what are we talking about it for? Well, I mean, what, do you want to, do you want to rezone it for a reason, or, I mean, it's going to be a conditional use, right?
That's right. The, yeah, the truck stop is a conditional use, both in Liberty County and Midway. Midway's going to have to approve it as a conditional use for their part as well.
So if they say no?
Then the project's dead, but you will have already zoned this property business back here on the rear, and it could be used by some future commercial development that's not a truck stop here, but it-
Well, it could if we had approved that.
That's right.
So, I mean, I just-
It's a, the truck stop is conditional use in Midway and Liberty County, so you both have to do it.
I understand that, I know exactly where the piece of property is at, I just wondered why we were doing a conditional use for a parking lot. That's basically all we're talking about.
Well, I'll show you the, I'll show you the overall site plan, it all goes together.
Well, yeah, I understand it all goes together, but we can't actually approve anything but the parking lot because it's in the city, it's not in the city of Midway, right?
The parking lot is not in, yeah, this portion back here is not in the city of Midway.
Right. Jeff, Jeff, let me ask a question. Why didn't this go to the city of Midway first?
It, it could have, it just happens that you meet on the first day of the month and they meet on the-
Doesn't matter, but still, because you got to take care of the front part first, should have been taken care of first.
You got to take care of both parts, really.
Well, hold on, Mr. Chairman. What I'm saying is, we are doing the back end. If it was done on the first end, Midway should have been, because that's where you're coming in off the road at, you're not coming in off the road on the back end in the county side. So if we say yeah and Midway say no, then we just wasted our time.
And, Mr. Chair, also, that's the point that I was making.
But the property happens to be split between the city and the county, so we have a part in it regardless. We still have to do, just to do our part for the parts that's in the county.
I mean, that's all we can do is our part.
Yeah. Well, that's, I understand that we can just do our part, but, you know, you're kind of like saying, okay, we're going to go ahead and approve it, and when we approve it, then that means you're going to have infrastructure on the front part there that I hope we're not going to be involved with, the city of Midway will have to be with their dime on that, right?
That's right.
Herb cut or whatever.
Still city property.
Okay, all right, as long as we're clear on that.
That's right.
Any other questions? Okay, you can see the, this map here shows the existing zoning. The blue area there is, that's IC and the city of Midway, and just interstate, commercial, and any, anything in there requires a conditional use, that's why we're here, that's why we're going to be taking this to Midway, is because any type of use in this blue area requires a conditional approval by a mayor and council. So, and then, of course, you see the area out here, this is, this area right here is Zone AR-1, which is the agricultural residential zoning in the county. You can see the other surrounding areas, you got some B-2 commercial there, which we talked about during the last presentation. And then, of course, directly across the street, you got the Gleve Plantation, several hundred acres of property that was approved by the Board of Commissioners, I don't know, 15 years ago or something like that. Anyway, here's just a plat, just showing that, that city limits line there of Midway. You can see the back portion that we're asking you to look at, this front portion will be considered by Midway Mayor and Council. This is also a separate piece of property right here, it's been used in the past as a parking lot for Holton's, but this is part of the parcel as well.
So that, actually, Jeff, that's that 700 feet that represents the city limits of Midway?
Right, from the highway back to the city limits.
700 feet.
It goes out 700 and about 750 feet.
Okay. Now, Jeff, actually, I know this is just a rezoning, I got a question. How far the entryway is actually from the red light right now? And I know DOT is going to have to play an important role in this.
I've measured that because I knew this question was going to come up, from this crosswalk here to where this driveway is, is about 375 feet. That'll stack about three tractor trailers from, from this, from the exit lane here to that entrance.
But you can stack three, but you're blocking traffic if something is going, is going eastbound.
Oh, I mean, there is a center lane there, I mean, you could, this would have to be restriked so that you could get the trucks over in the center lane out of the, out of the travel lanes.
There you go, okay.
But GDOT does have to approve that.
Yeah, I don't see that.
Right.
I mean, I don't.
Okay, so this is their, this is their concept plan for this project. The Holton's Restaurant, or I think it's called Smoking Pig BBQ or something, is right here. The McDonald's and the C store is right here, so they're turning through their property and coming back here. This is a 6,000-square-foot C store with a restaurant in it that's going to serve the truck stop. This is the gas pump for, the diesel pumps, I guess, for the trucks, and these are the 10 pumps out front for the automobiles. And then, of course, the truck parking lot is back here, some of it is in Liberty County, some of it's kind of sitting on top of the city limits, the city line. So that's, that's the basic concept plan. Our zoning analysis, does a property have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned? We said yes. Does a property, does this proposal meet the J-LUS study? Yes. Does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? We said yes. The larger Midway portion is designed, is designated as commercial. Beyond the city limit line, areas are designated as residential low density. However, in this case, as the city limit divides this parcel and altogether different use on the back portion of the same parcel would not make a lot of sense. That's our analysis on that. Number four, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? We said no. Is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? We said yes. Will the zoning proposal create a burden on streets and utilities and schools? We said no. Would the, would this allow short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? We said no. This would not cause a domino effect, this area has already developed somewhat. Are there unique historical sites would be adversely impacted? We said no. Is a parcel in flood zone? No. Is it spot zoning? No. And then, number 12, are there unique conditions which support approval or denial? We said all adjoining parcels of budding East Ogletorpe Highway, either commercial or almost, are mostly in the IC corridor, some of them are bigger and they stretch over into the county, but most of them are in the IC corridor, which does allow for a mixed type of commercial use. And also, most of the parcels behind the IC corridor are designated as residential low density or a budding K Creek or Charlie Butler Road. So, planning commission heard this, heard this request at their February the 15th meeting, and they recommended approval with standard and special conditions. I'm going to give you the approval first for, the special condition first for the zoning, and then we'll go into the conditional use. The special condition is, with the gateway and site plan review, consider light and noise pollution, landscape buffering, and ingress and egress. So this, this area, this, this truck stop would be in the gateway corridor, and it would, they're recommending, the planning commission recommended that you look at these particular areas when they're looking at the site plan of this. The site plan will have to come back through the gateway process later.
Jeff, Jeff, over here, you said somewhat developed, can you explain that statement?
If you go back to the... You've got, you've got other property here, you've got a Burger King, you've got a truck stop over here across the street, you've got McDonald's and a C store here, you've got a restaurant there, you've got a little restaurant with a fruit stand there, you've got some other smaller office-type developments along the corridor, that's why I say somewhat, it's not fully developed, there's still plenty of opportunity to develop in this area.
Now, Ruth, why I asked you that question, have you been down that way in the afternoon?
Yes.
You have? It's a mess, isn't it?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of traffic there, especially with regard to the employment on the other side of the bridge.
Right, and I know this is a rezoning board, but I'm just saying, we have to look, learn to look at all of these things before we jump out here on a limb and say yes. We're not trying to turn anybody away, but we need to start, and I heard what the chairman said, we're working on it, but how long is that working out there? And I know it takes money to do these things, but we need to think about the safety of the citizens, those coming through, and those who live here.
All right, is the petitioner here?
Yes, sir.
You will give us your name, sir, just given the overview-
My name is Jeff Lanier.
An overview of your project, Mr. Lanier?
Yes, this, the drawing that Jeff showed is just a preliminary drawing, of course. There were three people that stood up during the zoning application with their concerns, which always legitimate concerns. One was the noise and light pollution. Well, the property adjacent to me is completely vacant, and I certainly wouldn't put in a bunch of ex- And I certainly wouldn't put in a bunch of expensive lighting and point it away from my property. So, the light, I, I really didn't understand much. Noise pollution, you're sitting right on top of 95. I mean, there's gonna be noise one way or the other. But I understand those concerns. I really do. There, additionally, there was concern about the gateway, and I think gateways are extremely important to cities. I think once you see what, what we do, uh, I think it would be an asset to the gateway. We, uh, I brought some pictures for y'all. This is a duplicate of exactly what we will do if we are permitted. Some of the things we do is acres and acres of sod. We cover all areas with sod. We irrigate. We exchange flowers twice a year with seasonal flowers. We have security on site twenty-four seven. Uh, we pressure wash everything four times a year. I think it would be aesthetically pleasing to the gateway because the property is visually exposed as soon as you get off that ramp at seventy-six. Now, in this preliminary drawing, I've, I've come to find out in the last twenty-four hours that, that GDOT does not like where that driveway is. I'm already working on getting that resolved right now and shifting that driveway further away from I-95, which, which I understand is the issue that GDOT had with the current position. But like I said, you gotta submit something. It's, it's all preliminary. We've been in business fifty-seven years.
Where's, where's your nearest location?
Albany, Georgia.
Albany, Georgia.
Where I'm from. Yes, sir. I have a daughter at Georgia Southwest, uh, Georgia Southern, so that, I'd looked at some sites in the Statesboro area, but, but really, really liked this particular site.
I was gonna ask you, what branch of Liberty County?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I'd heard that too, the concerns about the interest ways, so-
Right.
You're already working on-
To my, as I'm told by engineers, GDOT cannot prevent you from accessing your property. They can tell you where to put the entrance, so I think that's certainly a resolvable issue.
All right, but once again, it's a rezoning, so we'll-
Yes, sir.
But it's good to hear that from you.
Yes, sir.
Questions for the petition before I open it up to others? So, your nearest location is in Albany?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just wondered there, Mr. Chairman, of course, I guess that's the off-ramp going south? The one that's right directly in front of your business there? Is that what that is?
Yes, sir.
Wonder why you couldn't, I, I mean, I know everything's not gonna go south, but it would appear that that would be an easier route for the, for you to leave out and, and get on the off-ramp.
I don't think that would be allowed.
Well, I, I-
I mean, I don't know for sure.
I understand why it wouldn't be because it makes a lot of good sense. You know, you, you would think that if a truck was going south-
That would be easier.
He would come out instead of having to go all the way back out there to a, well, he wouldn't have to go to a lot. He'd just stay in the D cell lane till he got over there and it merged, but-
Oh, okay, sir.
That's all I had.
Yeah, thank you, sir. All right, uh, who has been notified of this project? Who has property two hundred?
Thank you all.
Don't go far. Uh, they, they would like to speak to this, uh, that's not in your area, okay? All right, thank you. Yeah, we got a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval with the special conditions.
Jeff, if you will, for the, record, go back to that page just so even I can glance at it again.
Commissioner Stevens had to step out a few moments. Yeah, I believe it is in his district.
Okay, bring aside the interview.
Special conditions.
Okay, all right. Is that second?
Second.
Motion to the second. We approve LCPC's recommendation with these special conditions. That's printed for us on our screen. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Question, please. Um, this is also a motion just for rezoning.
Rezoning, yes, sir.
And just like the other, uh, project, we just considered if, uh, we rezone it, we still have to come back for approval of the site plan and all this good stuff.
Yes, sir.
And Gateway. Gateway will come to you and the city of, of Midway. So, you, you'll get a chance to look at the specific designs, which talks about drainage and appearance and everything else.
Well, I mean, it'll have to be approved by the city of Midway before it goes to Gateway.
That's right.
So, all we're basically doing is approving-
Our little back piece.
Rezoning on our little-
Parking lot, basically.
Yep.
Yeah.
But there are two parts to this. What you're, what you're voting on now is the zoning, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you the conditional use. We said there's two, two actions you need to answer. This is just the first part.
And this still is only for the parking lot.
In the back.
In the back.
The back piece of it.
Piece is in the county.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick note. There is a safety study going on that corridor too with some design, and so they need to be aware of, you know.
Are you not aware of it, sir?
Yeah, there, there may be some alterations made to that section of highway down there. Mm-hmm, for safety reasons. As you develop your plan, probably want to stand to.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, uh, where am I?
We're voting.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thanks, sir.
The next one is the conditional use, and, uh, the Planning Commission heard this at the February fifteenth meeting, and they recommended the same condition, the same special condition, uh, approval with the same special condition.
It's a little confusing.
Yeah, say that again. Go back to that.
You gotta have, in, in order to have a truck stop, you gotta have the B2 zoning, which you just approved, and you gotta have a conditional use to allow for the truck, uh, parking terminal. Uh, so, they, they wanted to put the same special condition on both. You approve it with that special condition that this has got to go through Gateway, and you gotta, you gotta look at the, the noise and the landscape buffering and the ingress and egress, which is what Mr. Brown just mentioned.
All right.
Jeff, Jeff, the gateway, how far does that gateway extend back out? I mean, is it over the seven hundred and fifty feet?
The gateway does go to the seven hundred and fifty feet, but the Planning Commission and part of their special condition wanted you to look at the gateway as well, to, to look at the whole site, not just stop at the Midway city limits, but, but take into consideration the whole site because you got trucks parking on back further into the county area. So, they wanted to, they wanted us to bring the gateway review to Midway and Liberty County. Gate, Liberty County and Midway both have the gateway ordinance. Uh, so they, so they, rather than just, just suffice to have the Midway City Council look at it, they wanted both governments to look at it, just so it gets double-
Double.
Double checked.
Okay. We'll do that. We'll do it. Okay, all right. Where was I? I hadn't asked for a motion?
Yes, sir. Chair and ten motion.
Jeff, I make a motion that we, um, uh, accept the special condition on the gateway.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand for approval. Or say aye?
Aye.
Where's Justin? I tell you what, now, they, the city of Midway, they just went down through there and pulled the tape from the edge of the road and, what is that, a hundred?
Yeah, you find that a lot, a lot of cities along the interstate, they just have a certain-
No, I'm talking about State Route thirty-eight.
Yeah.
There, there's, as, as Mr. Stevens said, there, there, there's seven hundred and fifty feet on each side-
Right, on each side of the road.
Right-of-way of eighty-four.
Right.
Yeah.
Huh.
Yeah, you find that commonplace along the interstate. All right, sir.
Okay, Chairman.
We done with the rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Chair and ten motion?
No, 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 I'm sorry. This, this is a, no, this is a variance.
Chair and ten motion to come out of a public hearing.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, back in the regular session.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a variance by, this has been submitted by Mr. James Green, applicant, on behalf of his wife, Wanda Green, owner, to be allowed to encroach into the thirty-five-foot required front yard setback uh, by about eight feet. Instead of, uh, instead of building thirty-five feet back from the road, they want to build seven, uh, twenty-seven feet back from the road. Uh, and I'll, I'll give you the reasons why they want to do that. They want to, they want to build a detached garage workshop that's approximately twenty-two feet by twenty-seven feet. This structure will be a prefabricated metal building, uh, property is located at four forty-five Rythatch Road. Uh, additionally, the applicant is petitioning to have the structure in the front yard rather than the rear yard as required by the ordinance. So, here is our ad in the Coastal Courier, and here's a sign, I mean, yeah, the sign on the property, that's the home. This is a current, uh, carport structure they have out there. They're wanting to build this garage sort of in the front here over this pad. This is a, this is the shape of the property. You can see why they're, they're kind of limited in the area where they can, where they can build this garage. Uh, this is, I think it's called Retirement Circle here. This is Rythatch Road. Um, and, you know, this is the home, and they've got drain field over here, and they got some other buildings in the rear of the property.
I believe all those folks get along pretty well out there, don't they?
Yes, sir.
This is, the property is on-
How do you do that?
AR1, and, uh, this is a statement from the applicant. Says the north end of their property has a septic tank and drain field. The west end of the property is low-lying and often wet, uh, so the south end of the property is the only option for them to build their, um, their garage building. And, of course, there's a sign, picture of the sign again. You can see, uh, they've got the, the marking there showing that they want to build it twenty, twenty-seven feet from the right-of-way. This is the right-of-way. They want to build it twenty-seven feet off of that right-of-way instead of the required thirty-five feet. And that's just a picture of the structures that they want to build. And this is the, uh, location where they want to build the structure. And that's just a, uh, plat showing the, the dimensions of the property. And this is where they, just a sketch, house, the existing carport. This is where they want to put the garage. Uh, conditions, and these, these are the conditions that the Planning Commission evaluated in terms of, uh, making a recommendation to you. Uh, the property is a triangular shape, as we pointed out. Uh, the drain field takes up most of the area of the rear yard, so we found that to be a, a hardship. Uh, the property is, um, the application of this appendix, if you, if you didn't, if you made them comply with the thirty-five-foot setback, it would be an unnecessary hardship. The, uh, conditions are precurial to this piece of property because it is a triangular piece of property, and, uh, we determined that the relief, if granted, would not cause any substantial detriment to the surrounding area. So, Planning Commission heard this at their February the fifteenth, uh, meeting, and they recommend approval with standard conditions. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You can listen to her.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that, that's in my district, and I wrote out and looked at it, and, uh, Mr. Green, the applicant is here on behalf of his wife, Ms. Wanda, and, um, there's definitely a hardship there with it being in that triangle, and he's already got a concrete pad there, and he's got the, uh, I believe the, the camper underneath one section of it, and he just wants to add on to it. So, my, um, I would make a motion for approval with standard conditions.
Second.
Motion to second that we approve, uh, with standard conditions. Uh, out of number zero-one-four dash LC.
Yes, sir.
Would it matter, record any further discussion on this presentation? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Uh, the variance is approved.
Thank you. I'm sorry to work y'all so hard this evening.
You did, sir.
You all right. You earned your money.
Mr. Green, you can come back anytime. I'm sorry you had to wait so long, but it happens sometimes. We got a lot going on in Liberty County. Got a lot going on up here. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir.
We'll see y'all later.
Bye-bye, Mr. Chairman.
All right. L H, W A P Water Assistance Program, I don't know what it is.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. This is something we became aware of. In fact, I think, uh, you kind of alerted us to this, but it's a low-income household water assistance program.
I didn't recognize it.
Yes, sir, through Georgia. Uh, it's a program that actually is administered through the, um, regional, not the regional commissions, the, um, I'm late.
Coastal Air Act.
Coastal Air Community Action Agency, sorry about that. Uh, it's administered, uh, as appropriated by federal funds. Uh, on the back of the handout sheet, it shows you the phases, uh, that were available at the end of twenty-one, and then what goes through in twenty-twenty-two. Um, we'd like to recommend, uh, that we enter an agreement with the, um, uh, low-wrapping program to be able to offer this to the citizens that are our users or our water system. It basically helps them, if they meet certain low-income requirements, to, uh, help them with their past new water bills on that. Uh, we, we've explored it. We've, we've talked with, uh, Community Action Authority about it. It's been an ongoing program for years, and it's been very successful. The people actually make application to them, and they screen them, uh, for everything, but I think it'd be a real, of, of real assistance, especially during this time, to the, to the rural water users, if we could help them by making it available.
It will be.
Commissioner, it's what's your pleasure?
Yeah, I think tonight, we've tried every way in the world to help people, and I don't want to go home without helping these folks. So, let's do what we can, Mr. Chairman. I make that motion.
I second it.
Motion to second. We approve the, uh, low-income household water assistance program. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please, or say aye. I think we lose Commissioner Frazier?
We did. I tried to dial him back up, but I-
Hey, I have one question about that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Joey, how, how would we get the word out that we have this program?
Well, it's like-
Put it on the water bills or something?
Yes, sir, we can. We'll put it on the water bills to make them available. Uh, Coastal Georgia will run it up, and we'll put it on our websites.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll do a follow-up with a, with a release.
Okay.
Because I think it'll be real helpful.
Actually, well-
I mentioned that also, excuse me, Commissioner Gill, you know, we're talking about, we've got the grant to extend that. I don't know, did you see that email?
Yeah.
I did.
It'll go all the way to, just about to Liberty County. It will go to Liberty County.
It will go to Liberty County.
Yeah, we got two. Uh, that's right. There, there's two. The one, the one is the extension of the current system down Louis Frazier, almost a Riceburg connection, uh, which is the one that we talked about before. And then, we got funded on the grant to do the extension on the west side too, to come this way.
Mr. Brown, is there any way with the one going down Louis Frazier? We check to see will we be able to meet how close we will actually be able to come to the city limits of Riceburg, uh, actually where their water systems stop at.
Sure can.
Commissioner Gill.
Well, y'all, uh, back to the, the low-income, uh, water assistance. Um, I, I guess, Joey, along with notifying them the ways that we talked about, is there any way we can mail our water customers, um, a letter?
We can.
Yeah, I, I think that, that'd be even better than, uh, you know, a, along with, just any kind of way to get the word out that we, that we have this program. I, I think a letter coming, you know, to the person that, you know, that may need to get one of his nephews or somebody to help him, you know, understand it. Uh, but if they qualify for it, I, I think, um, we need to make sure that we do everything we can to include everybody.
Coastal Georgia already has some flyers. I think a little letter, a brief letter with those flyers sent to those people would be good with a contact number.
We do have one.
Great.
We do.
Yeah, would be good. What is the, it used to be the requirement, or what requirement, the city, after you got a certain age, was the water in sewer froze?
Well, there was kind of like a flat rate for senior citizens that, that, that own the home, not, not someone-
Right, not renter.
Not, not the renter, the owner, homeowner over sixty-five, I think is.
Okay.
I think they still have that. I need to check into that. I'm-
You may qualify.
You fixing to be sixty-five?
I'm already sixty-five. Thanks.
All right.
Sending Ken Howard an email right now.
Memorandum of Agreement between Savannah Tech and Liberty County Board of Commissioners.
Our EMS director's here to tell you a little bit about that. Mr. Chairman, you got a, uh, copy of memorandum of agreement between Savannah Tech and, and Liberty County Emergency Medical Services. This is something that the hospital had ongoing with Savannah Tech, and, uh, Savannah Tech's requested that again, so, uh-
Kristy, you blended in to the audience.
I didn't know who she was sitting there with.
I'm glad we, I'm glad we had you in EMS here.
Well, you guys should have in front of you the memorandum of agreement. Again, this was something that we did occupy and entertain with Liberty Regional, and we would like to transfer that over to, under Liberty County EMS. Um, this is pretty common amongst our, um, other EMS agencies, Bryan, Bryan County, Effingham County, Chatham County. This is something that is very crucial and mandatory for anybody that's enrolled in an EMT or paramedic program. Depending on which credentials they're entered in, they begin their training and education, and then at one point, they then are left to go out to do some clinical work. Depending, again, on their credential determines how many amount of hours in the field they are required to obtain to, for completion of their program of study. are required to obtain for completion of their program of study. Once they complete that, that is when they then test out for practical as well as written for state and national certification. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. It's pretty much, we would make those arrangements between myself or our service with Savannah Tech to schedule those ride-alongs with those students. And would not conflict with any of our new higher-end orientations. Those would take priority over any ride-along student.
Chairman of County Attorney has reviewed this and he's also provided some accompanying documents, releases from the student along with HIPAA releases for training, so I didn't make copies of all of that for y'all. Maybe I just wanted you to approve the agreement. Just, just know he's provided all those backend documents, too.
And to note, too, that the HIPAA training is a requirement of their training and usually that is in the beginning of their training before they would be out, released out into the field for us.
Got you.
This would also be beneficial in the fact that we would be able to pair those students with our medics and it would kind of give us a way to scout these as potential employees for the future as well as kind of let them have some experience with our service to see if maybe we're a good fit for them to maybe pursue an employment with us as well later on down the road.
I've seen it work.
Absolutely, absolutely. And a lot of times, if you reflect back on the time that you did your, we call them ride-alongs, that's what we all call them. If you reflect back on, those are very crucial, looking back to see how far you've come. You never forget your orientation time, that's for sure.
All right. Any questions from, Ms. Krista, before we take action? Chair and Taylor motion.
Make the motion. We approve the MOA with Savannah Technical College.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the memorandum of agreement between Savannah Tech and Liberty County Board of Commissioners by way of the EMS.
Thank you. This is something we would also like to do with other surrounding colleges in the future, so we may, we may be touching on this again.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right.
Do they still do that, Ms. Chairman, in, in the high schools? I mean, I know we still have the nursing program, but I was not aware of how many people that are from as far away as Michigan in here working. I mean, they're just traveling nurses, they're not in your community anymore.
It's very lucrative.
Yeah.
And it's very common that because we are a military community, that some of those spouses that travel with those military, we, we do see a lot of those employ with our-
Well, I was in Savannah here this past weekend. I was surprised at how many of those people there saying, you know, one of them lived in Baltimore and there's three of them, three ladies, and they would travel to North Carolina and work for two or three weeks and then they'd travel to Hinesville, they'd go to wherever they needed to go. It's, they just said there's not that many people that, that's living in a community that want to do it anymore, so.
And again, that's kind of why this is beneficial for us because usually these people that are enrolled in these programs, obviously they're local. So that kind of gives them the door into our, it's how I started. I did my clinical rides many, many years ago with Liberty and it opens that door and it kind of gives you a feel, when I say you, the medic that's precepting them, kind of already gives us that ability to see maybe what kind of person they're going to be when, when in the field.
Appreciate what y'all do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's not me, I got a cool crew behind me.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you so long, too. All right. Executive session, personnel matter.
Yes, actually I have a personnel legal matter we need to really do before the other hour.
Chair and Taylor motion, go to the executive session.
I move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. You're now back in the regular session. Item number nine D on our agenda will require our...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, excuse me, that we would amend budget number 2022-01 to $55,883.
Motion and second, we approve budget adjustment 2022-01 in the state of the matter, any further discussion? If there be no, favor, raise your right hand please. Our position, the motion passes. Administration report, sir?
We can, we can, during mid-month.
Chairman, I make a motion where you adjourn.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned.
But there was one more thing, did you want to talk about revoking the emergency order for mask mandate?
That's right, that's right. Our numbers are good.
Our numbers are good, they are down almost 100 today. So, which is, which is great, and we're in the low level as classified now by the CDC new guideline.
Which will allow voluntary masking.
Yes, so do we, let's just for the sake of it, please re-adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion where you re-adjourn.
Second, all in favor? All right, Mr. Brown, what's your recommendation, sir?
That we revoke the emergency order that was issued on January 17th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion where you...
What does the emergency order, Joe, what does that cover?
Revoke.
Don't have to wear masks.
That's correct, it makes them optional in county buildings.
Everybody clear?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, all for that motion.
Second, Commissioner Stevens, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand please. The emergency order to revoke, we would now resort to, we lost it, Commissioner Walden, to voluntary masking.
And government buildings, that's right.
That's right.
Counter-government buildings.
Counter-government buildings.
Well, I just got me a new shipment yesterday, I'm gonna still wear mine.
That's right. Now, Chair, ten motion to adjourn, no move.
I'm going to see the president.